Sarah, can you hear us? Sarah?
Yes, now I can hear you.
You?
Thank you.
Let's call the meeting in order. Have roll call, please.
Joe Meyer?
Here.
Eastling?
Here.
Link Hammer?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Right.
Here.
All right, nobody in chambers, nobody on Zoom, so we can move past citizens' input and move the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Did you want something with help?
No, I was.
Okay, call roll, please.
Miller? Reich?
Aye.
Joe Meyer?
Aye.
Eastling?
Aye.
Link Hammer?
Aye.
A first new business item is the Greater Dubuque Development Corporation annual update. Come, thank you.
Good evening. Here, Adams, ladies and gentlemen, council. My name is Rick Dickinson. I am the president of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about Greater Dubuque, what we do, and to give you an update on our activities in the Greater Dubuque area. I'm going to pass out to you my business card. On that card is my here for reasons. I want you to feel comfortable to call me day or night if there's an issue that you would like us to address. And I'm passing out both handles before this document. Capital campaign that funds Greater Dubuque Development. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about Greater Dubuque Development, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about the organization. Greater Dubuque Development was established in 1984 when the MSA, the Metropolitan Statistical Area of Dubuque was in terrible shape. We had the highest unemployment in the United States at 23%. 25% of everyone that worked in Dubuque County worked at either John Deere or the packing plant for about 10,000-plus folks. And by 1983, John Deere had slipped to less than 1,500 folks from 8,500 high, and eventually the pack closed. And so the Greater Dubuque area was in a tailspin. And the organization was established in 1984 as a Big Ten organization where everyone had a voice and no one had control. And I worked for the board of 46 folks, community leaders throughout Dubuque County. We do three things at Greater Dubuque Development. One is business retention and expansion and recruitment of business. We do about 300 conversations every year with businesses across the county. We call them info-action interviews. You give us the information, we act on it. We use a contact manager software, so the information we collect is not just random, it's not just conversational. It's detailed confidential information about those particular companies, what's going on in their world. Is there a problem that we, as a community, can assist them with? Is there an opportunity that if we jump on it, we could make it happen sooner or in a grander way than otherwise would happen? And because we sit and talk, sit down and visit with business every year, 300 of those visits, by the way, there's about 1,200 of those visits done in the state of Iowa. 300 are done in Dubuque County. 25% or 3% of the population. Because we listen, though, we identified early on, late 90s, that workforce, if you look at the demographics of rural America, was the greatest challenge we faced going forward. And so we began a series of programs called Workforce Solutions, which is the second bucket of our activities. It includes AccessDubuqueJobs.com, but if today you go to AccessAsburyJobs.com, Asbury Jobs come up first. If you go to AccessPiastaJobs.com, Piasta Jobs come up first. If you go to AccessDiersvilleJobs, Diersville comes up first. All the remaining jobs, over 1,000 opportunities today, follow thereafter. But that gives your folks an opportunity to identify positions on AccessAsburyJobs.com. AccessAbuse.com is a website that we have in partnership with The Telegraph Herald. And we, that is the only thing we have in our operation that's pay-to-play. It's based on the number of employees that an employer has. They pay a fee once a year, and that fee allows them unfettered use of the site. They can post as many jobs as they want, utilize the site, and of course, there's no charge to any applicant utilizing the site to seek opportunities in the Dubuque area. The revenue from that is applied to the work that we do in Workforce Solutions. It's, we have programs that include recruitment tools. We have a welcoming program called Distinctively Dubuque that introduces people to the Dubuque-Asbury County area in an hour-and-a-half tour. We have classes called Distinctively Dubuque, which are five classes in an evening that include employers from across the county. Where they sit down, we take them out to dinner. The first night is at the Brazen, for example, where these newcomers, classes of 30, are brought to nice restaurants throughout the community, one week at a time, for five weeks, to learn about the history of our region, to learn about the businesses in our region, the recreational opportunities in our region, to try to ingratiate them to our community as quickly as possible. We also reach out to colleges and higher education. Career fairs, we'll have a career fair on March 28th for all institutions higher learning in our market. In the, in May, we'll be inviting the career placement officers from colleges and universities for a 300-mile radius from Sioux City to Milwaukee, coming to our community, so the career placement people know that there are opportunities in Dubuque County for their students. Pay attention to them, wine them and dine them, show them around our community, introduce them to employers in our market. And lastly, we do what we call strategic initiatives. That includes broadband expansion in Dubuque County. That includes renewable energy at our landfill and at the Water Resource Recovery Center, where we capture methane and convert it to biogas and sell it back to Black Hills. It includes childcare, where we've just recently partnered with Dubuque Initiatives, acquired the former Medline building, you might be familiar with that building. And we'll be putting a state-of-the-art infant care, childcare facility that will be staffed by the Y. We are also working on housing as a major component of what's needed in our market. Our budget runs about 2.6 million. We just had a budget hearing, a meeting this morning with our board of directors for the fiscal year beginning in July 1. We ran the five-year capital campaign in the hopes of raising $11 million last year. We did achieve, we're at about 12 million and change right now. We'd like to get to 12 and a half. I'd love to have Asbury be an investor, but know that whether or not you're an investor is not a determination of whether or not we serve employers near our market, whether we serve newcomers to your community, whether we serve employers anywhere in the county. It's not a pay-to-play, except for the AccessDubuqueJobs.com. So that's what we do, in a nutshell. And there's a lot of things going on in Dubuque right now, and there's also a lot of challenges in Asbury and Dubuque and all the cities in our community. Loss of air service is a major hit for all of us. The remote working has resulted in a number of facilities being vacant around Dubuque County. Those folks are still working remotely. However, there's always that threat of the company determining whether or not they will require butts in the seats, and if they've given up their lease, or if they've sold their building and there's not a seat here, if there's a change in attitude on corporate level, it could be a concern to rural America in particular. But I think all in all, we're in very good shape. We have a strong base, a diverse economy, and communities like Asbury are the foundation of the housing market that we do have. If you look at the success of what we do, and our goals are to expand employment in the county by, to 64,000 from the current 59,000 and change, increase the population base to 104,000, increase the median household wage to 76,000 per household, increase capital investment in the county to $1 billion, with the majority of that going to housing. Those goals aren't just about Dubuque. In Greater Dubuque, the tagline "Greater Dubuque" is not about a Dubuque that gets greater and greater. It's about the region that surrounds Dubuque. Economic regions aren't boxes, they're not circles, they're not geopolitical. They're more like an amoeba or a universe. Every universe has a sun, the closer you are to the sun, the healthier the planet. The healthier the sun, the healthier the universe. We're connected to each other, whether it's in Flatville, or Galena, or Dyersville, or Asbury, or Dubuque. So I'm here to report that we're working very hard on a lot of different initiatives. We do include Asbury in our service area. Go to AccessAsburyJobs.com, find an opportunity in your community, and then the other 1,000 beyond that. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Sure. We still miss her. Right. And I appreciate that consideration. And, you know, sometimes I think, you know, a newcomer to our market would know that they're in Asbury or they're in Dubuque. They're in this really cool place. It's a great place to be and have a wonderful job of great housing opportunities, low cost of living, a safe environment, good schools. But, in fact, there are geopolitical areas within the area. I would like to offer to you a routine report to the council as you see fit. Part of the agreement we have with the city of Dubuque, for example, is we go up on a quarterly basis and give an update of what's going on. Yeah, Greater Dubuque Development Corporation. I'm not suggesting you want to have four doses of me in a year, but I am suggesting that anytime you want me to be with you, I'd be glad to share what's going on in our community, the things that I can share, some things I can't. But know that that offer is there. I would love to have you be an investor in Greater Dubuque because I think you'll keep a closer eye on us, you'll be more aware of what we do if you are part of the investment in what we do. That's all your choice. And before I leave, too, I want to thank you for your service. I don't know how many of you know this, but I was a council member of my hometown of Sevillah and a mayor of Sevillah. I served on the board of supervisors down in Jackson County back when dinosaurs walked the earth. Served in the Iowa Legislature in the early 90s. I greatly appreciate public service. And I know at a time when sticks and stones will break your bones and sometimes hurt your feelings, know that I really appreciate the sacrifices you make serving in the council, and I appreciate what you do.
Thanks, Rick.
Well, the bylaws of the organization say that we represent the Metropolitan Statistical Area of Dubuque, which is all of Dubuque County. But in fact, we interview employers in Joe Davies County, in Grant County. We interview employers outside of Dubuque County, on the Jones County side. We interview people in Delaware County to have a feel for what's going on within the economic region of Dubuque. But again, it's not really geopolitical, there's no framework on it. The largest investor in our organization on the public sector side is the city of Dubuque. And we have a very close connection to the city of Dubuque. We meet with the city of Dubuque, city manager and their staff every Wednesday at 10:30. 52 weeks a year. And to better understand what they're doing, what did they say they were going to do last week, and did they do it? What did Greater Dubuque Development say they were going to do last week, and did they do it? And if not, why not? How can we help each other do that? We're available to your staff as well, but again, we don't, we're not, we don't try to push ourselves to people. We want people to contact us if they need something, and then we're at their disposal. So, all the communities in Dubuque County, to answer your question, but we actually branch out farther and and share whatever best practices we have with the other economic development groups that do exist in Joe Davies County, and Grant County, and Delaware, and Jackson, and Jones. Our vice president of business services, Jason White, lives in Diersville. One of our directors of Workforce Solutions, Nick Hockenberry, lives in Bellevue. Rob Apple from our office lives over in East Dubuque. For the first 18 years, the 27 years I've been here, I commuted from Sevillah, Iowa. So I understand that this, it's not just about Dubuque, it's about all of us. Yes, sir. Yep. Yes. Yeah, Metropolitan Statistical Area includes all of Dubuque County. So when I say Dubuque, I'm talking about Dubuque MSA, which is Dubuque County. So when we track employment, it's for all of Dubuque County, including Asbury. When we track our because we can't, we don't have the county. The census doesn't break it down by community to that degree. That's why we use that data. Now, that number is actually a lower number than Asbury. Yeah, yeah. It would be much lower than any of the communities along Highway 20. The highest concentration of poverty is in Dubuque City. And it actually, if you take Dubuque out of Dubuque County, so if you take that 59,000 population out of the 99,000 population of the county, the median household income goes up dramatically because the percentage of folks living in poverty is concentrated in the Dubuque area, city of Dubuque area. No. No. There are MSAs that do cross borders. Council Bluffs, for example, is in the MSA with Omaha. Davenport is in the MSA with Moline and Rock Island, the Quad Cities. But Dubuque is not, is not a multi-county MSA. It's strictly Dubuque. Duba. Sure. Mm-hmm. They can, and I don't know that there hasn't been representation from Asbury, a resident of Asbury on the board. Well, yeah, Ann McDonough was on our board last year as a supervisor and resident of Asbury. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, usually lives by Meadows. Well, Joe is our board chair. The board chair of Greater Dubuque Development. I hear what you're saying. It's a very large board with 46 members on it. The bylaws provide that there are ex-official members. And those bylaws include, those ex-official members include, I won't go down the entire list, the mayor of Dubuque, one supervisor, the city manager of Dubuque, two council members of Dubuque, one representative from the legislative delegation selected by the legislators that serve Dubuque County. This conversation came up, too, at the conversation I had with another city just about a month ago. I believe the reason it was set up the way it was set up originally is Dubuque pretty much solely financed Greater Dubuque Development. When I came on board in 1995, the budget was $180,000 a year, and 2/3 of that came from the city of Dubuque. Today, the budget's 2.6 million, and about 850,000 of that comes from the city of Dubuque per year. The shift was 63, 36, public sector versus private sector. Now the shift is about 36% public sector, 66% private sector. So, in that case, the amount of investment that the city of Dubuque makes into Greater Dubuque Development Corporation is significant. The next largest investor is the Dubuque Racing Association, in the tune of about $350,000 a year, and then the balance of that is all private sector. Now, the decision as to who's on the board beyond the ex-official members is the determination of the board of directors. It's not a staff decision. When staff gets involved in deciding who's on the board, then it becomes sort of a good old boys' network, and that's unhealthy for any organization. So the process for the members, for representation on the board of directors, is the executive board of the organization acts as the nominating committee. They're in that process now. Those nominations are made to the investors in Greater Dubuque Development, who are actually the voting members who determine who the chair, vice chair, treasurer, secretary, and executive board and full board members are. And that meeting is typically in June or July. The mayor's often been at that meeting, and the investors in Greater Dubuque Development Corporation actually elect the members of the board. The full board of 46 members meets on a quarterly basis. It's, you know, it's a large group. So they meet on a quarterly basis, and then the executive committee is 19 members of that 46-member board. They meet in the two months in between the quarterly meetings. The way to get on the board is to say, "I want to be on the board." And the culture of the board is that it's the chief executive officer of that which they represent. As an elected official, as a chief officer of a bank, I mean, there are no second vice presidents of commercial loans on the board of directors of Greater Dubuque. It's the president of the financial institution, or the president of the college, or the chief operating officer from the insurance company. It's, but if you want to be on the board, you let us know, and we give that list to the nominating committee every year for their determination as to who should be on the board. There, as of last year, for the first time, is a requirement to be on the board of directors, you must be an investor. It doesn't have a number on it. We don't say you're platinum, gold, silver, tin cup. It's, you're either an investor or you're not. If you're a business, it makes no difference. We pay just as much attention to you as a business, whether you're an investor or not, as it relates to the board of directors. That is a requirement to serve on.
Great, so.
Well, if that's the case, then who? If that's the case, I would tell you that he was first, then his last, because Asbury's been the definite winner on housing growth in our market. If you look, if you look at the demographics of the MSA, the only loser in population growth is the city of Dubuque. Asbury now at 6,000. Piasta, well, Diersville at 4,600. If you go down the Highway 20 corridor and even in Cascades, significant population growth in the last 20 years, certainly in that last 10-year census. And the growth that was experienced in Dubuque County from 2010 to 2020 of about 5%, 100% of that was outside the city corporate limits of Dubuque. It's a combination of things. It's perceived, and in some cases, real, that it's perceived as the higher price point. There's some realities in that, the topography, the limestone, the cost of infrastructure, the scarcity of property. But there are also a few more layers of rules for development in that market, which increases costs and changes attitudes about the buying population. Dubuque is changing that by adjusting their approach to housing, and for the first time in the 27 years I've been there, are now willing to TIF infrastructure improvements. It's still much more restrictive than most of the communities in Dubuque County that have used TIF for housing, but at least they have changed that a bit. And so as a result, there's a lot of apartments that are under consideration, a lot of single-family homes under consideration, but we're anxiously waiting for spring to come and for those shovels to go in the ground because just as all these things are starting to perk up, because we believe there's a need for 1,300 additional housing units in Dubuque County right now. That's the shortage. And that has to happen broadly across the county. I don't, I hear what you're saying, and I agree that we see Asbury and Dubuque as one community, and when you're in the Asbury City Council, the mayor's city council, huh, no we're not. Sort of when I was the mayor of Sevillah, McCokina gets everything, you know? But, believe me, Asbury is among the healthiest, if not the healthiest, planets in the universe. And its success, in collaboration with the city of Dubuque, is based on the success of Dubuque. The investment that your neighbor has made to the Dubuque Industrial Center West and South, the Southwest Arterio, the Crossroads Industrial Park, the Millwork District, the downtown. When we take people on a tour of Dubuque, through the Asbury Plaza, into Asbury, past the Meadows, down to the riverfront, past colleges, they don't see it as Asbury or Dubuque. They just see it as this lovely community that we hope they consider living and working. But how can I help these, this poor lady trying to carry on her, she looked like a roadie. She had a screen she was carrying in one hand and Thanks, Paul.
Okay. Next item is Resolution 28 to 2023, a resolution approving change order number seven for the Meadows House, Meadows Club House renovation project.
So change order seven has three parts. COR 11, COR 12, and COR 13. COR 11 has to do with the replacement of some lights, both interior and exterior, as well as the reinstallation of some lights that were being reused in the lower level. COR 12 is fixing some items that were erroneously left out of the initial design drawing, specifically that is the plywood and the carpeting on the walls in each of the simulator bays, and also two restroom sinks. And then COR 13 is actually a credit. Some of the simulator bays were designed with what we felt were extra light fixtures, so we elected to remove those to save a few bucks. Grand total on those three is $9,630.54.
Any questions, motions?
Are we getting to the end of the change orders?
I sure hope so.
There seems to be quite a few of them.
Stuff like this stuff now is, you know, we're, as things get built, we're getting, you know, we're finding, you know, hey, we want to change this, or this isn't the way we had change this, or this isn't the way we had thought it was going to be. So, it's things like that. The big part of this one was, was simply an error, you know, in the drawing that everybody knew about, but it never got into the drawing. I mean, and it was, so we're going to back with that. The bad news is that we're now starting to leak into the contingency fund. You know, we've, the, the VE money that we had, uh, had saved, that has taken care of all the change orders up until today. We had what, four thousand? What do we have left in that, uh, before this? Six thousand, so we're three thousand into contingency now. So, that's the bad side of it, but. It's almost three million dollar project, one percent.
Not many of these change orders were voluntary. I mean, they were things that.
No, I mean, these are all fixing, yeah.
And I preface that, that we have some things we'd still like to roll into a project that we, we're going to ask for some leniency on the, on the contingency. We're four thousand into the hundred thousand. We're not allowed to spend a hundred thousand, but as a project, as a project, construction has evolved. Things have come to our attention, things we're always on our, on our bucket list, we probably want to do, but we weren't going to ask for the money upfront because we're afraid of going way over. And I think we've managed it well. So, it's wrapping up. We've got a few things we want to come back with, and we've got more opportunities to save money in some signage and marketing, and potentially maybe landscaping. So, we're, we're trying to stay within it, but we, there are things we think you'll support that will get into contingency. They're not tens of thousands of dollars, but there's some niceties that I have that we can back up with a business case that we'll be bringing forward in the next couple of meetings.
Right. Yeah, and it's, it's, you know, the, the thing that we have to remember too, it's different from new construction. New construction, you're dealing with, you know, very little surprise unless you're getting into the soil or whatever else here. We're opening up a wall and, hey, that wasn't supposed to be there. We didn't have a plan set, now we got to move it, so that kind of stuff.
Okay, other questions or comments?
Make a motion to accept Resolution number twenty-eight of twenty-twenty-three, uh, change order number seven for the Meadows, uh, project.
Second. Motion and second, any other discussion? I'll roll, please. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Part of the conversation today, there, you know, the Meadows did come up. And one, uh, one resident was surprised that she thought, you know, the Meadows is closed to, you know, just, it just could say, you got to be a golfer to go to the Meadows, and we clarified all that, you know, nobody can use the Meadows. But, um, we, they also talked about as part of this, should we have some kind of grand opening, ribbon cutting?
A, a, and we will, but here's the challenge. We get the building on April first. We can't ramp up full operation April first. Once we get into middle of April, then, I mean, it's great guns. So, what we're envisioning is a soft opening, ribbon cutting ceremony kind of thing, small reception maybe. Then in the fall, we'll, we haven't done a city open house in a while. The vision we've been talking about is, last time we had one, we headed to the Meadows, we had free golf for the, for the residents. So, that's a good time to reinvigorate the businesses, our model shifts now to the off-season. And we want the non-golfers to realize this there. So, there's a lot of reasons not to try to do the math, the mass grand thing in the spring, because staffing issues, we're always short-staffed any other time of year. So, God nor, we, we're not going to miss that opportunity. But it seems like the best time to do that would be late August, early September, and then get the residents to come out and look at it more then and realize that it is a destination for the off-season as much it is. Yeah, but, you know, we don't have as much capacity for, for the non-golfers in the summer, obviously, right? Because they're already in the building, so we are not going to try to over, overextend the staff right now. Yeah.
It's been discussed. I mean, we've discussed it at length internally, Jim's right. I mean, we fall, what, that, that fall time is really going to fit best into what we have going on for our calendar, so, yeah.
It's not going to be a secret, we reopen and we're doing better, but the formal thing will come at a better time. Okay, any other comments or questions in on, on Resolution twenty-eight? Yeah, go ahead.
No, well, no more than normal. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, is that it? Thank you, call roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Rice?
Aye.
Del Meyer?
Aye.
Eastling?
Aye.
Frank Adams?
Aye.
As approved five-zero, thank you, Jeremy. Next item is consideration of the bids for the Hales Mill Road Reconstruction Project.
Yeah, so we, um, got the bid information last week from the DOT. And with the DOT project, you never know what kind of numbers you're going to see, because you have people bidding from pretty much all over the state, depending on how far they want to travel. Um, I would say with that being said, we had four bids. Um, the three lows were actually pretty tight. Um, Eastern Iowa was the lowest bid. Uh, it, uh, two million five hundred sixty-two thousand, five hundred fifty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. Um, that was, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Beth, around eighty thousand dollars or so, under what our final estimate was for construction. So, I think that's a very good number, um, for the city. Um, I think also it's a testament to you guys that, um, it's a contractor that happened to work here last year. It's a testament to contractors wanting to work in Asbury. And they know that projects go really well, um, for them when they're working here. So, Patrick, your guys' selves on the back, um, for that as well. I think that's a testament to Asbury. So, um, with that being said, I, I mean, I would recommend awarding this, uh, bid to Eastern Iowa.
Who did Spring Green? That was the Spring Green contractor.
Yeah, they just did the Spring Green and Sunset last year.
Okay, thank you. Questions or a motion? I'm sorry, we, let me just move on. So, Beth, we can go right to Resolution twenty-nine?
Uh, we just, you know, Nate went over the bids, so we go to Resolution twenty-nine to three for council approval to award the bid to Eastern Iowa.
Okay.
Yes, they are. Yes, they are.
Ultimately our decision, right?
That's correct. Um, you, council has to award the bid, and then we have to tell DOT that you accepted these bids and you're awarded to this.
And then it gets complicated.
Yeah, and, uh, then I get to go to the Doc Express and do all this stuff, so, yeah.
Thank you, is there a motion then on twenty-nine or twenty?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-nine of twenty-twenty-three, awarding the contract to Hales Mill for Hales Mill Reconstruction Project to Eastern Iowa.
I'll second.
Thank you, motion and second, final discussion?
I like the idea that they got it, because I think you work well with them. So, that's a plus.
Yeah, I mean, they were good to work with last year, and I think the residents, uh, were happy with the work that they did.
Issue, is there any open litigation, or this is the last chance before, for any citizen, if they were going to object or sue, right? We're, we're, after we award it, we're done?
Um, I'm not.
Well, the ward, they could still, I suppose, can, that can test or sue us over the assessment, if that's probably what you're talking about. We have not heard anything from any residents since.
Correct, it's all been quiet since they've got their preliminary assessment. But this would, this would be a totally separate, uh, discussion.
As a resident, I mean, it's a good bid price. I wish it would have been lower, but, yeah.
Okay, anything else? Call roll?
Miller?
Aye.
Rice?
Aye.
Del Meyer?
Aye.
Eastling?
Aye.
Frank Adams?
Aye.
As approved five-zero, the next item, ordinance one, twenty-twenty-three, an ordinance amending chapter ninety-five, sanitary sewer system, repealing provisions inconsistent therewith, second reading?
Um, before, just matter of discussion, we did put out communications via Facebook, um, public service announcements, the radio station, uh, Telegraph and Telegraph Herald, as well as, um, going to our email post, and any place we could to, you know, tell residents, um, about the pending, um, increase in the utility rates, so.
Yeah, some keyboard warriors, but I don't see anybody here tonight.
So, timeliness is everything when Dubuque's, we're going to raise their rates eight bucks average, so, good.
Is there a motion to approve the second reading?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number one of twenty-twenty-three.
Second. Motion, uh, Rice, second. Miller, thank you. Other discussion? Just law. Call roll, please?
Miller?
Aye.
Rice?
Aye.
Del Meyer?
Aye.
Eastling?
Aye.
Frank Adams?
Aye.
Is there a motion to waive?
I, before we, instead of waiving it, maybe since we just sent the notices out to everybody, should we, is there any? Is, I'm going to, I would encourage that we say that we shouldn't, my opinion.
Okay. I, I don't, I don't hear a motion, and I will ask again on the other ones, but silence is, no. Okay. Then we're on to ordinance two of twenty-twenty-three, excuse me, an ordinance amending chapter one fifty-two, stormwater management system and facilities, repealing provisions inconsistent therewith?
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance number two of twenty-twenty-three.
Second. Motion and second on the second reading, any other discussion? Beth, will the state, they're, they're trying to say that we can't make any stormwater regs that are more stringent in, like, state and federal. How's that going to impact us with our ordinances? We're going to have to.
He, it's TBD, I'm not sure if these are, these ordinances are actually, or these proposed laws are actually going to get all the way through. Um, and I'm also double-checking to see if, we have an MS four permit, which not every community in the state has an MS four, um, permit. And I believe some, I've heard rumor today in some of the discussions that this would only apply to non-MS four communities, because we do have a permit that we are required by the EPA, by the state of Iowa, to uphold our stormwater regulations. And, you know, some of what they're proposing is, you know, basically taking the burden off of the builder, but the burden's still there to the developer and the city to still, you know, put these regulations in. So, I don't think it's, you know, a fair way to go about it.
Is that a state ordinance in conflict with the DNR, then?
Is that what that is?
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, I just want to ask, because firstly, I'd hate to see us have to go backwards in our stormwater. It was, it was hard. I mean, it was, to get this to this point, but, you know, when, when, when the heavy rains come and we don't get people in the chamber any longer, is, is, you know, is testimony to that the things we're doing are worthwhile. And I'd hate to have to go backwards and just let them do whatever they want, because it'll come back to bite us sooner or later, bite the residents.
Yeah, and, and we did have the, um, DNR in today to do an MS four audit of our systems and our permit. And, um, basically, she was telling us, because of, you know, the collaborative work that Eric and John do within the city of Dubuque, Dubuque County and city of Asbury and the smaller communities, we are somewhat of a model in our stormwater ordinances and permissions and our regulations and stuff work better than most places in the state right now.
Okay, I, I'm done. Anything else on second reading? Call roll, please?
Miller?
Aye.
Rice?
Aye.
Del Meyer?
Aye.
Eastling?
Aye.
Frank Adams?
Aye.
All right, I assume again no motion to waive the statutory. And I'll move on to ordinance three of twenty-twenty-three, an ordinance amending chapter one oh five, collection of solid waste, recyclable materials, and yard waste, and chapter one zero six, open burning, here to of the code of ordinances, second reading?
On this ordinance, I would, um, recommend that if we could pass this for the, um, refuse and recycling. We have been on a program to increase the rates for the refuse since last year, because, one, we have a independent hauler that, you know, we're dependent on and has regular increases. Um, the other reason is, um, we are making those changes to the yard waste, and we want to start, um, putting out that, communicating the changes in the free yard waste and the yard waste bag, the bags. And that all starts, um, April first. So, we'd like to get that, um, out to the residents. And if we wait until, um, March fourteenth to, when this ordinance passes, that's only going to give us two weeks to get that all out.
Beth, just to, just to clarify though, the, the rate increase wouldn't be until July first? The new ordinance for the bags would be April first?
Right, we're going, the rate increase is July first, but the bags would be April first, because that's when the yard waste season begins.
Um, my only concern about this ordinance, I didn't speak up on it until I actually witnessed it, was with the ice storm and the wind, you know, if you get limb down or whatever, you really have no place to take it anymore, unless you can find somebody to haul it for you. Where before you could break it down and put it in a trash can, now to cut it up and put it in a bag, I'm not sure this is going to be the greatest thing that we do. I'm supporting of it to see how it goes, but I'm just telling you, down the road, that could be a problem with, especially with our wind out here, and in the spring having more limbs down or whatever, cut them up and put them in pieces or whatever.
Um, to clarify, Bob, it's still, you're still allowed to bundle. You just can't.
Yeah, you still got to cut them in four-foot sections, where before you could put them in about eight-foot.
No.
What do you mean, no?
No, you couldn't.
Well, I'm telling you, I did it for two years.
Well, then you're lucky they took them, because that wasn't part of our thing. You're lucky.
Chief, do you have the taser with you?
No, you're lucky they took them, because it's always been, you know, four-foot bundles, no more than thirty-five pounds, or forty pounds.
I'm just telling you what happened, so.
You think a council member would know this? Well, but, yeah, to answer your question, there is. Again, no, no, but, but no, it, it, the regulation, that regulation is not changing.
But there might have been, you know, there might have been a special pickup, we might have done a special pickup in case of a storm. I mean, we've, we also may have done a special one, like, if there was a storm and you had limbs and stuff that were longer, that we might have, you know, waived some of the rules and made special circumstances for a storm. But our, um, bundling the, you know, the limbs and stuff is.
Yeah, I knew, I knew that was an ordinance, but I'm just saying when you use the trash can, that is three feet, they let you put it more than a foot above it.
Well, but in general, Dittmer is holding us to the letter of the contract, which rightfully sold, like, they're not going to get other truck and pickup boxes and things like that. So, that leniency is probably going to go away.
But I'm just saying that sometime, that could be a special pickup, or something may have to happen.
But day to day, they shouldn't have been doing that. And if we don't change this ordinance, they probably still would enforce, we're not going to take an eight-foot piece any longer. So, we're really not changing anything, we're just.
You said, you're putting that stuff in your garbage can?
Well, yes, I am, because once we changed over to the, the garbage cans we have, I had garbage cans that I was using for garbage. So, after you wash those out or whatever, then you could put them in those, and they would take those and dump them.
That was, that was allowed, and that no longer will be allowed to use that, that can, but you could, but you could still bundle.
I agree with everything you're saying. I'm just telling you, when you have an event and you have larger limbs or whatever, we may need to consider something else.
Yeah, so when we have events, we, we, we make special provisions for larger, larger item pickup and larger branches. Okay.
Are we still going to have the garage, we have like a large pickup, is that still?
We will.
Garage sale?
Sale, still have the cleanup day following for, you know, extra garbage.
Large item.
Got to be bundled or in four-foot sections.
No, but we'll have large item pickup on Saturday after, and then.
Yeah, shredding and.
Shredding, free recycling, well. Okay, I, do I have a motion in on this? I don't think so.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, motion and second on ordinance three of twenty-twenty-three, other discussion on the second reading? Call roll, please?
Miller?
Aye.
Rice?
Aye.
Del Meyer?
Aye.
Eastling?
Aye.
Frank Adams?
Aye.
That is approved. I will ask again, is there a motion to waive the statutory rule requiring said ordinance to be considered and voted on for passage at three council meetings prior to the meeting in which it is to be finally passed, be suspended?
A move, second.
Motion and second to waive? Beth, there should be a motion on that and a motion on the, on the final passage, right? Okay, um, that, that's why I'm. Yeah. We usually have a motion to suspend and then a motion to file. Right, but as I recall, there was a motion to suspend the mandatory reading. And then, then, then there's a, a second motion to put it in this final adoption and passage, correct? Okay. So, there, there's a motion under item L, so I need a vote then. Okay, I have just questioning what, do I need roll? Okay, okay.
It should be. If you're going to be consistent with what's going on above it, the, the. Have.
It, it doesn't, it's just a motion to waive the, the procedural, and I just need a, all in favor on that.
So I'm, I'm making a motion to pass ordinance number three of twenty-twenty-three.
Well, right now, the, the motion on the, on the floor is to waive the statutory, it's, it's waving, it's not final passage yet, Bob, there's two steps we have to go through yet. That makes sense, so, I have a motion, I have a motion to waive in, in a second, so all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, none, okay. Now is there a motion to finally pass and approve ordinance number three of twenty-twenty-three?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, any final discussion? Carl, roll, please.
Miller?
Hi.
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 All right, thank you, Indal, I always thought we had a roll call on that, motion to waive, I apologize. Okay, we will move on to public input, and still nobody in the chamber or on Zoom, so we'll pass that. You have P and Z minutes, uh, renewable energy, wait a minute, maximum lock coverage parking regs and.
Have we had any problems or questions on Spring Green when we've only had parking on one side with that side being the? Thank you. Beth, the one question I had on the examples for lot coverage, there are a lot of samples in there, but when I look at this, I, I can't, maybe I just missed it, but percentage of the lot that can be covered, so like, a lot of those examples look like they would be under the new regulations, they wouldn't be in compliance anymore.
There are a few of those that wouldn't be compliant.
Example, that, that, that new mall place right next to where the bank was, that their grandfathered, but they, if it was a new development, they wouldn't have any, there's no green space, right?
You mean, they, you know, they would be fine, I mean, the, a commercial business would be able to have a lot more impervious than, you know, residential, but, but that would still be in compliance.
All right, any other, um, questions or comments, otherwise a motion to accept reports?
I'll make a motion to accept the reports.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, uh, Kurt, you want to start?
Uh, two things, one is for, uh, Blaine, uh, I noticed that there were some potholes on the eastern, uh, city limits right there. Thank you so much, that's huge. Um, and the, the other thing was, I, I know what Jeremy was saying about, you know, you're starting to dip into that, that cushion that you had, but that's the way things are, I, I totally get it, so, you know, full steam ahead.
Uh, pass. Um, again, I'm going to pat us on the back, uh, with it being so windy or whatever lately, the garbage cans getting blown over, whatever, I've not seen the amount of trash that I have in the previous years, I think it was a great thing that we did there, and I hope we, uh, stick the course there.
Hey, um, just, I just want a couple of shout-outs here, so, you know, Beth has been really with, with the budget and this other stuff with P and Z, they just put a lot of hours in, and you don't always see that, and I appreciate that, um, you don't, kind of infant them with Jeremy and While and, and Bo are going through right now, they're, I think they're looking forward to the golf season, so there are less work to do. But there's a lot behind the scenes, and, and it's, you know, their hearts are in it, and adrenaline's carrying them right now, but I appreciate that, and like, you know, I, I've talked about Blaine and the crew, they had a rough month, and and there was some nice work on Blaine's part to identify an opportunity to keep and build and grow our, our, our resources in the community in, in this water and wastewater, and that's going to be a huge win in the future, that could be your legacy, you could retire earlier then. So, and then, as always, the chief and his people, we don't rarely see them, and I, I, again, do appreciate their work in the background. If we don't see them, then that's probably doing a good job. Just wanted to pass those comments on. Beth, anything from you?
Would just, um, say we had our initial community conversation this morning, it was attendance, but, um, they did give kudos to Blaine and the crew for, uh, you know, the snow removal, you know, the good work in the parks, they liked the library, they liked the building, you know, a lot of positive to say, and I, I guess overall, it was really just a good conversation and information sharing, you know, that happened.
Anything else from anybody? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?